And now major meeting at 6:33.
Second.
It was 31, I think.
Seconded by Sweattick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Your session ended at 6:31.
6:31. Actually, I have 6:33, but. And we will enter into our regular trustee meeting here on February 15th, 2022. Martha, can you call the roll please?
Sure. Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Here.
Here. And can we stand to salute flag, please?
The flag of the United States of America and the State of Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here, everyone.
I have 6:31, 3:31, and 6:33.
I think she said.
At this time.
6:31.
Did you guys get the special meeting minutes for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting that I had made changes to on that draft from Jen?
I, you know what, I was looking for the Comprehensive Plan Meeting Minutes and it's possible I got distracted and didn't find them. I just found the February Meeting Minutes and when did you send them, right?
Yeah, I sent them at the beginning of the week. Well, probably midweek last week.
You want to table those and do them at the work session?
Yeah, we'll table. Well, you know what, we'll, I don't know that we can do them at the work session, but we can do them at the next Comprehensive Plan meeting.
If you add it to the meeting purpose for the work session, you can.
Okay, because it's a special meeting. Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the work session meeting from January 25th, 2022, as well as the regular trustee meeting for February 1st, 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. We will sign those and get them down. And we will move straight into police because Chief Sutner has another engagement. Welcome. Good evening.
On two real quick items. First is request for approval for training Ohio case law and legal updates through street cop training, March 2nd of this year, Fairview Park, Ohio, for Officer Miracle, Landis, Ghetto, and Stupka at a total cost of $700.
So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
And can I do roll call, please?
Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Chief Sutner, is that microphone on by you? We've got it. Thank you.
We keep forgetting. I'm sorry, Jen.
You know what, I turned them off before we went to executive session because I thought they're going to be done by the time we start.
And the last is just an informational item for the board. For fiscal year 2022, the state of Ohio has mandated 24 hours of training for officer. With that, they are reimbursing us for our time. And we received our check on Friday from the Ohio Attorney General's Office in the amount of $5,738.40 to compensate us for the hours that we'll be involved for some of that training.
Very good.
That has been passed on to Martha to be deposited into our training line. That's all I've got.
Just to clarify that, because we approved the permanent appropriations, it's deposited into your miscellaneous.
That's fine, too.
And you have more than enough funding in your training line, so it'll just roll over into probably unappropriated amounts for next year.
That's fine as well. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Do the trustees have anything further for Chief Sutner before he goes? Public, do you have anything for Chief Sutner before he leaves? Okay. Thank you for being here. That was fast.
I told you that it wasn't going to take long. All right. Thank you.
He's got it under control. Thank you. Chief Grossenbaugh.
Good evening. I'd like to go out of order, last item of swearing in Bianca and move that to first so I can get her and the day crew out.
Very good.
That would be okay with the board?
Absolutely.
Bianca just finished DMT school and she is a firefighter. How long have you been at Wellington Park?
Coming up on a year.
A year at Wellington Park, so she's come with some, a little bit of experience. So.
Do we need a motion to hire her?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, we just skipped a stop.
Request to hire Bianca Inman at a rate of 1435 an hour on a one, on a one-year probationary period contingent on passing her physical, which she had her physical yesterday, so we should have it in a couple of days, then we'll get her on the schedule as soon as we get the paperwork back.
So moved.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Pictures. Where do you want to have her?
Put the flag.
Yeah, you want to end with a flag? That's all.
All right, thank you.
Move the flag over here if you want to.
I could train Jen. Free copies.
Hi, Asher. Nice to meet you. Congratulations. Please repeat after me. I, Bianca Inman.
I, Bianca Inman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a volunteer fireman for Hinkley Township in Medina County, State of Ohio.
And volunteer fireman of the Hinkley Township in Medina County, State of Ohio.
During my service in the fire department.
During my service in the fire department.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Bianca. Welcome to Hinkley Township. All right. Thank you for being here. Good to see you guys.
Thank you, guys. Chief, you gave me a couple copies.
Yeah, there's one, I want to say you signed one of your file.
One will go to Martha.
The one will go to Martha, yes.
You are. I am.
Okay, so back to the top list. Request appropriations for $207 for program. It should be 36Q with our UTB. It's radio for the Cleveland Communication and the Mark System through BNC Communications.
Done.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
So the next one, I want to explain a little bit. Right before the lizard apocalypse we got, the admin side of the fire station heating was not doing any heat outs. We called Jackson Heating and Cooling, and they found out the heat exchanger, the flame roll out, and the limit control needs to be replaced. I asked, it's not an warranty, I actually called, trained, and confirmed it was September 2020 is when the warranty expired on that. They said there's a whole slew of environmental factors on why that could have went this early. They said they've seen it go this early, they've seen it last for years and years and years. They're not sure. They said if it's a ceramic heating tube on the inside, those tend to fail more. They don't know until they actually get up there, but there's nothing we can do. The unfortunate side is it's on back order until early March, but we have a couple space heaters running through the admin side and it's been keeping the temperature in the mid 60s, even this morning when it was two degrees out when I was there, or in the morning for call, it was in the mid 60s. So I'd like to request appropriations not to exceed $3,500 for the HVAC repair through Jackson Comfort.
So moved.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
You and Jen can just keep running laps. Every time it gets below 60, you just.
It's going to be 50 this week. We've got heat.
You wait.
Request appropriations not to exceed $350 for turnout gear boots for Daisy Siegelmeier through Fire Safety Services.
So moved.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
We tried doing this class early in the year and it was in January and was canceled because of COVID, so they're rescheduling or they reschedule. So request appropriations for the $95 registration fee to Save Kids Worldwide and $50 local fee to Save Kids Greater Cleveland for a total of $145 for child passenger safety certification training, car seat installation, February 22nd, 23rd, 25th, 26th of this year at University Hospitals. And as for Lebrax, I'm sorry, I did not put that on there.
That's, it's actually quite a bargain considering five days straight.
Yeah, yeah.
Learning how to install the car seat.
They've actually dropped it down a little bit. Gabe was the only one that's actually certified to do this, and he went through it through North Ridgeville. They've actually dropped it. It used to be five days of all classroom to understand how to install car seats, and then you had to do almost a whole week of clinicals of sitting down at university to install car seats as people would come in.
So any residents out there, feel free to contact our fire department. Yeah, never taken out.
We make calls all the time for it, and we, North Royalton is the only one that we know around here that does it. So this was being, Brunswick City Fire is the one that kind of spearheaded this, this class. So there, there's a bunch of us in the communities around here that are sending.
Well-trained.
At least one member through it to get it because of the need out there.
Thank you. So moved. Sorry, Martha.
No, will he be compensated then during this?
Yes, he will be.
So you may want to include.
Include.
Do you know how many hours it is?
It's, I think it's eight-hour days. It's eight, it's no more than eight-hour days, I should say.
To put a car seat in?
Yes.
It's a certification.
Yeah, it is. It's crazy because there's all these different models and makes, and this vehicle has this, this attachment to it. It's crazy. And people call up all the time for it.
It's a miracle we survived.
Yes, I know. I know, right now.
So let me ask you this. Do we assume any liability because we're telling people how to put their car seats?
No, we do not.
How does that work?
That works because they sign some paperwork. It's my understanding that says they don't. We show them the proper way, hand them the brochures, and then we go from there.
Is it a hold harmless?
Yes, I believe it's all a hold harmless.
And then we, the fire department will keep those on file?
Yes, yes.
So, so probably you guys can, what is we at?
$18 an hour.
Eighteen, so.
So 32 times 18.
Yeah, do that. And then if you could, there's no issue with you guys making the motion to proceed, but if you could then maybe redo a.
Yeah.
Training.
Training thing, you got it.
Request to include that. How about meals and all that?
There, it's all provided for them.
So I have, Chief, the new total would be 721.
Yes, yeah, that's what I have.
Okay, so let's modify that. So that you have the registration fee totals, but then you also have his hourly rate.
Not to exceed 721 because they may not be eight-hour days, correct?
Yeah, good idea. Yeah, just remember like when training is outside like that.
I forgot about that, yeah.
It becomes part of the training.
Yeah.
Budget, yeah.
So is that an official motion? Are we amending it?
We should amend it. So request for appropriation fee of $95 registration fee to Save Kids Worldwide, $50 to the local fee to save greater safety, to save kids greater Cleveland for a total of, I'm sorry, and then the, is hourly rate of 500 and.
76.
$76, not to exceed $721 total through, and then classes at University Hospitals.
So moved.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Next is a class for myself. Request appropriations for $395 for the class registration and travel costs not to exceed $205 to Bowling Green State University May Fire School for the size-up command tools and tips that's held at Bowling Green State University, May 16 through the 18. Class covers instant command, fire ground operations in smaller communities, and also signs that are potentially leading to maydays and catastrophic events on the fire ground. It's actually taught by Joe Perdeste, who is the chief of Leary Fire Department.
Well, okay, travel costs, is that your mileage?
No, the travel cost is just a hotel.
The, okay.
That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for meals or anything like that. I'll pay for that. I'm on top. I'm just asking that 205 is not to exceed.
Okay. For the hotel. There was mileage in there.
So moved.
390, okay, I just need to get this. 395 for the class and 205.
For the travel cost, which is hotel.
Just because it's different on your appropriation.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, you have 581, 28.
Oh, because we went to not exceed, we moved it to not exceed the 205. That was the exact, the, on the travel appropriations, that was the exact.
So if you could just send a revised one of those?
Yeah, I'll give you a revised one. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so it is. So 600 then? Is that what your total?
Yes.
And is that the, the motion you?
Yes.
Moved, Monique?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
600 total.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Thank you. The next one is, you guys have the contract, or, I'm sorry, not the contract, the bid package for SCBA, which was what we were awarded on the FEMA grant at the end of last year. That has been reviewed by Brian Richter. Martha was nice enough to break the wordage that I got to read out for that information.
Do we need to organize the dates first?
I have, I mean.
It is done.
I have that all right here. And then we will get that all corrupted in the actual document so it can be put on the website and available here at Tom Hall.
I don't think you guys have a copy of it unless.
Oh, the, this one, I did not make them a copy, there's no, I apologize.
That's okay.
It's a reader. You have that resolution number.
It's going to be one.
Is it going to be, who's going to do the advertisement for that bid?
We are going to have Suzanne.
Okay.
And have Suzanne.
Perfect.
Put in the newspaper. So a motion to adopt resolution number 021522-01, authorizing public bidding of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA in the Medina County Gazette on February 18th, 2022. Bid forms and specifications can be attained in person Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Hinkley Township Administration Administrative Building, 1410 Bridge Road, Hinkley, Ohio, 44233, or via the Hinkley Township website at hinkletownship.org. All bids must be received no later than March 15th, 2022, at 5:45 PM at the Hinkley Township Administration Building located 1410 Bridge Road, Hinkley, Ohio, at which time all properly filed bids will be publicly opened and read aloud.
I missed the, I missed the first date. I'm sorry, the February.
February 18.
February 18.
You guys just might want to schedule a special meeting before the regular meeting.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. So March 15th.
It's a regular meeting.
It's a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Do you want to open the bids at the regular meeting, or do you want to schedule a special meeting before the regular meeting to open the bids?
Did, was Martha's direction, we had to have a special meeting for that?
Well, the only reason I left it is the 5:45 because that's what Brian had in his, in this bid packet. It is, I mean, it is up to you guys. We can just make that change in the bid packet, or you guys can, you know, have it a few minutes early with the special meeting and then have some time to discuss it if you wanted to.
We could do a 6 o'clock special meeting. That way, we have them all at 5:45.
Okay, so we can make, they can be required at 5:45 and then amend this to say, at which time all properly filled will be publicly opened and read aloud. And I could say at the regular meeting or at 6:00 PM. It's up to you guys. You want a regular meeting or, or you want to just.
How do you want to proceed?
Picky back with the other one.
If we can do it in a regular meeting, does that make more sense?
We can. It just takes time. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just that everybody's got to wait to go their turns till the bids are all opened and go through that process, but it's, it can be done either way.
Okay, we can do it before then. If, if that works for everybody, 6 o'clock.
Yeah, so.
That is, that's 6:00 PM. So you're going to amend that?
I was going to say moved as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swidet?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Thank you.
The only thing I want to share with everybody, I sent the email out to everybody. We were awarded another grant this year of $1,400, which was a reimbursement grant for training classes that two of our members went to last year. Assistant Chief for basic fire instructor class and Anthony, Anthony's firefighter two class. We were reimbursed through the State of Ohio Fire Marchal Office for $1,400, which the money will be sent over to the township and then Martha will deposit it.
Well done, Chief.
We had another good blood drive this past weekend. We will not have one in March because of blunderday. That was the only weekend day to do Red Cross, but that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Do you, do you want to head out?
Yeah, that would be great. I got some office.
Okay. I want to be respectful of your time. Monique, I noticed that you have something else on your agenda items under you that are specific to Chief Grossenbaugh. Did you want to address that before he goes?
I do. Yes. I just wanted to congratulate Chief Grossenbaugh. I'm going to go with those. Sorry, I'm moving stuff around. I wanted to congratulate Chief Grossenbaugh on being selected as the lead chair to the Medina County Chiefs Association Training Committee. In that role, he will be helping to develop the curriculum and build it up and roll it out to the county through classes and training. So that's quite an honor, and it's something I know he was proud of himself. We're proud of you also.
Thank you very much.
Well done, Chief. Well done. Just add to your list. Add it to your list of things that you just do while, you don't sleep. That's sorry. It's not a big deal.
Are you going back to that freezing office?
Yes. No, it's actually 65, 66. That's.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out, Melissa. We could recognize someone who was here this time.
Trying. I'm trying. This chair is new to me. All right, so service. Mr. Bahari. Hello, good. How are you?
The only thing I have is discussion regarding subdivision standards.
Yes.
Something we've talked about before. You know, with the new developments going in, I think it's something we should try to address. I want to see if you guys get a chance to look at the county engineers' line for the different drawings.
I have looked at this at length because right now we have Serenity Court coming in to the Planning Commission, and the trustees are supposed to make comment on it. And so this is one of the things that I had reached out to you about, was specifically the roads. And I noticed in our language, our subdivision language, that there's some differentiation between what is required or recommended on the website from the Medina County Engineers versus what's in ours, and just because it just needs to be maybe revised. Do you have specific points that you want to bring up or talk about in that subdivision?
I really wanted to say is, like I said, we can leave the selection lists in that. What I would like to see then is, let's pick two different other ones. That way we have the option of, you know, the developer also has the option of picking what type of road, or they can come here and ask you guys what type of road you would like to see go in. Like one of the ones, like I said, that I told all of you that I recommended was the urban style, concrete curb and gutter, 12 and a half foot width lanes. This, this stop sometimes on those 10-foot lanes, trying to get a truck around. Wow. People park on the streets because people ignore the.
And that's why I called you today. Because our subdivisions requirements say 20-foot wide roads, but the Medina County Engineers specify 12.5 feet to the backside of the curb, which is much larger.
Yeah, because you're, I mean, you figure it's 20 foot of pavement right now is what we're putting in. You know, 12 and a half and 12 and a half, that's 25. Let's make sure high-foot pavement. Yeah, it's probably, once it does go and you have to replace it, yeah, you gotta, you have to say have more road to replace. But again, it's also where you can look at whether you want to do cement stabilized or you want to stick with what we're doing with the dial joints. You know, that's going to be totally up to the trustees. More replacement. Right now, we're doing cement stabilization. So, and then depending on, you know, the topography of it, on hills, I don't know if I would recommend that. So if you got a good, it's just going to be fairly flat, I would recommend it. If not, then you probably want to go with gravel. So let's, if you're able to pick a couple different ones, at least give yourself that option and be able to look at it. You know, I just think it's in the best interest of the trustees and the builders, you know, what the trustees want to do.
It wouldn't be setting it in stone. It would be adding it as an option.
Yes. Did you guys look at it? What did you think?
I think that in my mind, maybe the language and the subdivision requirements would be that the roads would meet with either the rural subdivision standard or the urban subdivision standard because it's ever-changing, and our language and our subdivision standard is very specific.
Maybe you guys could have someone from the county come in during one of your work sessions, now that they're during the day.
Yeah, we definitely need to discuss that. I was just trying to get it kind of ironed out before we send our notes to the Planning Commission for Serenity Court.
You guys would have to make a resolution to change your subdivision standards, so I'm not sure unless you did it today that you would have that.
Well, I'm just going to tell the Planning Commission what your recommendation is and that it coincides with the county.
Yeah, I obviously, one of the thoughts I wanted to hear from the trustees was, one of the ones that I had recommended was asphalt and concrete.
Just so they understand.
I can repay that. Five, actually, for total cost, I think I can repay it 10 times compared to one concrete replacement car. So. That's also. You can do a metal fill for about 200,000 mile right now, so.
My question to you is, and I think I asked you this yesterday, and that is, you have pointed out, I think, to all of us that, you know, why you like the curb and the gutter, you know, because of the, you don't have to deal with the salt runoff. And you pointed out the benefits to it, but my questions are, what are the drawbacks to it if, if we go to this? Because there's, the fact that we haven't been there yet must mean there's got to be some type of a drawback to it that we haven't gone there. Excuse me? Replacement cost. But it's, you do the black top.
That's the.
Row, right?
Like Woodhovest Ridgeville. So they have the two and a half foot concrete curb and gutter, and the black top in between them. So you have to mill it out every time, but generally with a hot mix asphalt, you're getting anywhere from 12 to 15 year lifespan. So the concrete's, so even if you said, like I said before, that you're, so let's just say a 10-year lifespan, concrete's 70. So you can replace that five times to the span of concrete, which 200,000 lane mile, times five is a million dollars. And I think when I figured out concrete per mile, it was like a million and a half. So still about under a half a million threshold, and they never bring you red every 10 years. So, but it's going to last longer now. You treat hot mix asphalt just like concrete, crack steel it. You can, we can replace it for a lot cheaper cost if we had any issues. So it's just a thought. I wanted to see what you guys thought about.
What was the engineer's office objection to the curb?
The curb? They didn't really get it, to be honest.
I thought he did. I thought he did when we were here.
Not that I remember. I know when I had talked to Chris about it, he just said, you know, it wasn't aesthetically pleasing.
Chris Kalina. Yeah.
So that was the only thing that I had found from the trustees before that. But like I said, you know, helps keep people on the red, too, and they can't see where they're going. They bump the curb with a tire, they're not going to go off where they don't, they don't have that curb. A good chance they're going to slide off that rid of it.
It's probably a good idea to drive up to Mr. Ridge.
I've seen it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just for a source of reference.
The county didn't like that because you have to know that every time.
That's what it was, yes.
That was the only drawback to that.
On Mr. Ridge.
Yeah, because you have to match that curb gutter. But like I said, you can replace it.
It's still substantially cheaper than.
That's what I was saying. I just wanted to hear your guys' thoughts. I wanted to give you my feedback and what I'm finding out, when I'm doing the math. You're seeing what concrete replacement is right now with all the concrete around us by missing the butt. It's going to take a long time to catch up if we ever get caught, so.
Just food for thought. Just food for thought, and I've, I've talked to Mike about this, maybe Jack, can't remember, but keep in mind that the valuation of a subdivision with a concrete roadway is higher than a subdivision valuation of a mill and fill road. And so you may be penny wise, pound foolish on this and you should do your due diligence in determining what exactly you might be giving up to gain what.
Hmm.
And that, that's always been the other objection by the county engineer. Um, Hinkley residents in the subdivisions are used to concrete roads. Um, and whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, it's a fact. And it does increase the valuation of those properties and directly impacts our inside millage, which is our major two revenue sources for road repairs. So, you know, do the math, inquire, and, and maybe, like I said, have the engineer's office come in and, and give you their experience with.
Can I, can I, where does the salt go for the curb? When you have the curb and, and the concrete, where?
Capacities. Cause all the capacities will be on the road. That's another thing I like about curves. As our build right now, the drainage is actually in people's yards, way off the road. So if I gotta replace a basin or light, I gotta replace people's yards where if I have a curb, I stay generally within the road, maybe a couple foot off, replace the basin or concrete pad. So, a lot of people don't like when we start gaining up their yards, so there are a lot of complaints.
And that's up at Vista Ridge too. Okay, so what are our thoughts to move forward with that? Or to, to look at that resolution a little deeper, that subdivision language a little deeper? What's the next step? Do you wanna have the county come out or how do you wanna?
I would say the work session.
I mean, that's why I wanted to bring this up, so you guys can discuss it. So we're all on the same page as well, you know what's going on.
Have the county come out during the work session?
Hmm.
Jack, will you organize that?
Yeah, do we know which one? Wanna do it the next one or?
Sure. After we're done with this meeting, we're not gonna have anything to talk about on the twenty second.
I think we're gonna have a couple things.
Okay, you wanna reach out to her and see what?
I can, yeah, but just, I would do it on your schedule, cause I, I don't know.
That's true.
They don't need a motion. It's just a discussion.
I'm just, I mean, having her schedule.
What?
Yeah, for availability is. Cause they were originally supposed to be here tonight, right? I thought, I thought I had Angie on my calendar originally.
That was before we decided to go with the two options.
So the twenty second or potentially March eighth?
I think it was actually March one of.
Twenty second of March.
Was it?
Yeah, just, like I said, she can give her recommendations and she can probably give you a little bit more history of life.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything else for us this evening?
Um, the only other thing I had talked about with all you before is, you know, island cul-de-sacs.
Oh.
What's your thoughts?
That is that same conversation, subdivision.
I like, I, I like islands.
Me preferably, I love islands for maintenance lives.
As, as long as the HOA is the one who's maintaining the islands.
Yes, that's the big hit.
Or not the township, I mean, it saves us, I would think, a lot on concrete also if you have the islands.
It saves you a lot on concrete.
They look nice.
Salt.
Slowing, yeah.
Slowing and our labor costs, our fuel costs, if you figure that out over the life of the road, over fifty years, and that adds up. Every cul-de-sac, every, you know.
Someplace to put snow.
So the.
People aren't upset about that, are they?
No, ever. The history of it is that the subdivision language that was adopted back in, um, gosh, Martha, I don't even know when this is, two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
Was that we allowed islands in cul-de-sacs. And then in March twenty twenty, um, under the advice of Trustee Schulte, we changed that language and eliminated the islands so that, um, because we were having issue according to the engineers with cracking and whatnot in between the island and the other side of the road. And it's something I'm gonna bring up to you tonight with the Serenity Court project, um, because it says in our language now that, uh, center islands, um, within township road rightaways are forbidden in a permanent cul-de-sac unless permitted by motion of the trustees. So I was actually gonna ask for the motion tonight if you would allow for islands in the Serenity Court project. Um, and of course, it would be if the homeowners association accepted maintenance. So that would be something we can talk about later, but I, I think that they look nice and I don't see any reason why we shouldn't.
With appropriate drainage.
Yes.
Vista Ridge, check it out. Meadow Crest, take a look.
It's in my calendar, I'm going to go this week.
You know, I talked with emergency services about it. He said he prefers full cul-de-sacs, obviously, just because.
Hmm.
But I also told him a whip of what the, what the islands are and he was fine with that. So that was coming from just when I talked with them, so.
It's tricky for buses too.
Be that as, you know, take that with a grain of salt. Like I said, this is a discussion. I'm just giving you what I have found out and this is all for information. Let's bring you guys to discuss and figure out, you know, what you might wanna do.
Was there a specific cul-de-sac that, that, that caused that, that changed? Do you recall?
I don't recall, Martha.
Do you, Chris?
I, I distinctly.
Is it, are you some recollecting?
Deal off of Boston Road was it, it was either, um.
Was it a tree or something?
No, it was that big, yeah, big, huge cul-de-sac. Um, in that development off of, it was a, um, for that whole big development, was that their, their island? And they had to take it out.
Oh, no, no, I know what you're thinking. You're thinking, that was prior, that was about two thousand and twelve. No, this is, this was in two thousand and twenty. That, that island was, the Boulevard Island was required to come out as, so they could do the full whip down the, the road. That was an OPWC grant we got, like, it was about almost a half million dollars. And, yeah. And that was, yeah, there were a lot of problems. Engineer said it was like a giant funnel just with the water, cause it was huge. And, and, and then the water would go in the island and then without the good base on it anyway, it was just causing that. But that's a, an entirely different issue than whatever.
And, and I have the minutes right here and it just said that Trustee Burns had pointed out the current language requires center islands and permanent cul-de-sacs and now Medina Co- County cautions against the installation of center islands.
And a lot of it has to do with the drainage. That's the issue. We do have the drainage and you don't have to, you know.
Good, you're having good base. You gotta have a good base. And unfortunately, a lot of these subdivisions, these older ones, they don't have a good base.
Right.
The D Trail, we replaced the pad, it was built right under. So, unfortunately, I don't know how that happened, but if you don't have a good base.
That's why we changed our subdivision standards.
Yeah. So something to think about, definitely. And I'll loop back around with you guys about that, uh, Serenity Court project. Thank you, Mike, given us much to consider.
Before we cut you loose, um, as far as, uh, he has reached out several times, no communication back from Burke Company.
Hmm.
Uh, I think we wanna do a certified letter to them.
Figuring his prosecutor's office to prepare it.
And then the, uh, last thing I have is I got a, Mike got a gold star for snow removal this week. Somebody came in, dropped off a nice note for him.
That's the second one in two weeks.
That was really, that was really nice of them to do and that was, they went above and beyond for you because I'm sure you're going above and beyond for them, so.
It was a, it was a good weekend. You guys did well. Thank you.
Jack, did you have anything else that you wanted to add while he's here, looking through your items?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike. Does anyone for the audience have anything for Mike before he goes?
More donuts for him?
Thank you.
Not yet.
You are welcome. Enjoy your evening, sir.
You have to do it?
For heat.
Yeah, you guys have a cold building too.
Do you wanna get?
All right, so I'm gonna move right into zoning. We had, um, interviews in the special meeting prior to this meeting for the zoning appeals positions as well as the zoning commission position. Do you have your resumes for conversation and discussion?
Yes. Did you get the email from Lisa?
No. Yes or no?
No.
Okay, so we will move that one. Well, that is very upsetting.
Yeah. Disappointing, but I understand.
Agreed. So the way we have it set up currently is we have, um, one alternate position available on the zoning commission, two member positions available on the B Z A and an alternate position available on the B C A. And based on our interviews, you know, I don't have the updated dates on here, Martha. You're gonna have to bear with me. I probably have to make a motion, cause this is the one for.
You want me to go get the minutes? I'll get mine in my office.
Thank you, that'd be great, while, while we have conversations. Okay, so we have Bill Schaefer, who is currently a B Z A alternate. Um, he came in and he specifically requested B Z A.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. We have Lindsay Rubel, who is a zoning commission alternate currently and came in and, um, discussed the B Z A option. We have Tom Schrader, who came in and said he would go either way, begged, pleaded, prodded, and he said probably zoning commission would be what he would recommend for himself. And we have Scott Keeling, who is also a B C A, um, preference. So, if we move Lindsay over to the B Z A, that would have another alternate position opening on the zoning commission, just for the public's knowledge. So it's almost a game of chess, if you will, moving all these people around. What are your thoughts?
I, I like.
I just recapped this. I don't know if you just keep it like what they want.
I like Lindsay and I like Tom for the B Z A. I, I really, I just feel.
You did like Tom for the B C A?
I do. I liked him for the B Z A. I, I don't, I don't think he'd be a poor fit for zoning, but I just, I like him for the B Z A.
Okay, what about Scott Keeling, who was B Z A?
I really saw with zoning and he said he wanted B Z A.
He does want B Z A.
And I, I thought zoning would be a good fit for him, more so than the B Z A.
Okay, why? Just out of curiosity's sake. Um, cause that was an interesting interview.
It was. It was. Just so much of his history and the things that he was saying, um, about why he wants to do it, I, I felt was, he was saying B Z A, but I felt it was pointing back more to zoning.
It did seem like he was focused on trying to, you know, control growth, that kinda stuff.
Make change.
Yeah, you know?
Hmm. So what are your thoughts, Jack?
I, I like Bill and Lindsay too, and I thought the same thing about Tom. I thought he was a real strong candidate for, uh, the zoning, the B C A as well, even though he said he was okay with either one.
So would you put Tom and Lindsay in the member positions and put, I said, did I say that right? Bill, Bill and Lindsay in the member positions and put Tom in alternate position? I'm doing it for my memory, cause I gave Martha mine.
That would be my recommendation. And, and the reason I would go, um, with Bill over Tom as the member is he's been a member of that board for so long, he is so well, I mean, like he said, he knows the book.
You guys do this. This has been my original recommendation from the get go.
But it was very important for us to have these conversations.
No, I agree.
Look at how much we learned about that.
And I told you, I love interviewing people because you get to know so much more about who they are.
And actually, through seeing Tom on the steering committee, I would have thought zoning. But being back there in that room with him today, I just, I'm like, he's B Z A. That's, that's what I was saying.
Background.
Yeah. I, I just, I feel that would be his, that, that's where he would best serve the community, is on the B Z A.
I agree. Do you agree, Jack? Or do you see Tom on zoning commission?
The only reason I would see him there was that was his first choice.
Hmm.
Um, but he's, he said he was fine with either and I think he's a strong candidate, so. Um, I would be okay with, uh, putting him in the alternate position as well.
Okay, I'm gonna sneak a peek at your paperwork since I gave mine to Martha. So, Bill and Lindsay and Tom for B Z A. And you're thinking Scott Keeling as the zoning commission alternate.
But I did ask him.
Yeah, and he.
And he said, he said he did not want zoning. That's why, that was why I, are you sure? So, I thought he was a, I thought he was just, and maybe that's something, I'm, I'm sure you'll be calling all of them. Maybe that's something, I got the impression, really from what he said at the end, um, I think he was kinda psyching himself out a little bit more about zoning. You know, he was saying, I don't know that much about laws. I think, um, he was putting more of an emphasis on what he doesn't know versus what he can still contribute, not knowing the law, you know, it is a board and it's an alternate position. And I think an alternate spot is a really, really good spot to get in there to learn and see, you know what, after twelve months, do you wanna do it again? Do you wanna ask for a reappointment or is this just not for you?
And that's exactly what an alternate is.
Right.
Gives us that opportunity to feel them out too and see, are they a good fit for this, this board? And do they work well with the other members of it?
And if you talk to him and explain, I, I would be fine, if he would be fine, willing to accept that, I would be very comfortable with that. I don't know about you though, Jack.
Here, well, here's, here's the other thing. We're talking about making him an alternate. What's the open position on zoning commission right now?
Just an alternate.
Two. If we move Lindsay.
If we move Lindsay, there will be two.
It'll still be an alternate.
Hmm. Either way, I foresee that we'll have to extend this application process again because we won't have enough alternates.
One on each one, yeah.
Yeah, unless, but unless you put Scott Keeling on zoning commission as an alternate and then you've got one for each board.
And you have an alternate for each board.
Right.
Which, through talking to Chris Kalina last year, he said that's, that's the norm in, in the state of Ohio, is just having one alternate.
And we've talked about it openly over and over and over again, that we don't even need to have alternates according to the power of vice code. We do it here in Hinkley Township because we see it fits the need if a member can't attend. Um, but there are not very many places in Medina County that have two alternates.
Right. It's kind of an insurance policy, but we wouldn't necessarily, you know, since we did just have this posted in December and now we just posted it again at the end of January, maybe see how this takes us. And we can always, you know, open that up to look for another alternate later in the year if we think that there's a need for it. And, and that's assuming that Scott would even be interested.
I'm really bummed about Lisa.
I, I am. I am too.
Okay, so if we do that, what do we have, Martha? You grabbed your notes, cause mine are not complete in front of me.
We, well, and as far as terms?
Yes.
You have a member term that is, Bill Budd's term expired twenty twenty-three. And then you have a, a five-year term for a member that ends twenty twenty-six and then alternates are annual terms.
Right, got that.
So are you thinking, um, Schaefer for the twenty twenty-six?
I would.
Rubel in Budd's date?
Hmm, and that gives us an idea, gives her, her inability to fill in, get acquainted with that board, acquainted with the policy, structure, procedure, which I think she will fit in beautifully with.
Hmm.
Um, and Schaefer brings, you know, so much knowledge in with zoning.
Yeah. I agree. I, I think that's a good, I think that's a good fit.
Do you agree, Jack?
I do.
Okay, and so we'll make Tom Schrader the B Z A alternate. The Schreders and the Schafers. I can't get it straight.
There's gonna be two of them now.
And then you want me to reach out to Mr.
Keeling?
Keeling and determine if he wants the Z C, is C? Spot?
Zoning, yeah, zoning alternate spot, yeah. I, what do you think?
Okay.
I, from everything he was saying, I just felt like it was more zoning.
I agree with you. I think that he wanted to invoke change.
His concern with zoning commission was that it may have been more than he's familiar with.
Hmm.
So.
But that's the benefit of the alternate position. You get to come in, read it, learn it, live it and do some investigation and, and it becomes a little bit easier every time. Okay, I will speak with him and get back to you and am I amending the organizational minutes?
Um.
Or just appointing?
You're, you're actually, you're just appointing.
Okay.
Are you gonna appoint Mr. Keeling and he could always withdraw or deny the appointment? And he could always withdraw or deny the appointment? Then you're covered. Except to him, and all you do is you just say that he did not accept the appointment.
I think it's a good idea to wait on him. Okay, yeah.
I, I don't know what he's gonna say.
I don't either. I don't have an inkling. But I agree with you that he was leaning that direction. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lindsay Rubel to the zoning commission, term ending in-
Board of Zoning Appeals.
Board, I'm sorry, Board of Zoning Appeals, term ending in 2023. Bill Schaefer to the BZA member for the term ending 2026. And Tom Schrader to the alternate position for the BZA.
Second.
For an annual?
For an annual term.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes, very happy about that. Thank you for putting in the time today to meet all of them.
I was just saying, you feel like a weight has been added.
I do. I say it all the time. A full board is the most effective and efficient board.
Technically, a full board is God's best position.
Well, we still have a full board. We just don't have an alternate. Okay, good job on that, thank you. Wanted to give you guys a quick update on the Adult Daycare Center. You have in your packet. She's gonna do that one. I'm just gonna read for the public's notice, notification. The zoning inspector actually sent an email to the county. The Adult Daycare Bar located at 729 West 130th has been out of business, and the liquor license number 9120458 was canceled on January 11th, 2019 by the Ohio Liquor Control. Per conditional zoning under Hinkley Code, when a conditional zoning business is closed for a period of two years, the conditional zoning is no longer valid. Section 8.1, 8.3D, discontinuance of use, voluntary discontinuance of the non-conforming use of this building, part of the building, lot or part of a lot for a continuous period of two years or longer shall constitute voluntary abandonment. Thereafter, any use on the premises shall conform to all regulations of the district in which the building or lot is located. And this is an R2 district. So right now, it's operating as a business, but has not been. And we have sent that letter to the county, and we have a letter going out to the Adult Daycare Bar owner. So I wanted to give you guys the update on that.
Yay.
It's been a lot of work, but we've, one of the things I wanted to tackle right away with zoning. Projects that are going before the Planning Commission in May from Hinkley Township are Serenity Court and Senior Housing. We will talk a little bit more about each one of those projects in a few seconds here. And I have the drawings. I've had Tom Wilson print them up so that if you guys had any questions or wanted to come up and see them, you could. Just so everyone knows, I am a part of the Medina County Planning Commission. There are three trustees that are required to be on that board. I was appointed by the Medina County Township Association, or the Medina County Trustees. And if I cannot vote on these Hinkley projects, I have to recuse myself, and my alternate is former trustee Chris Colina. So we still have someone from Hinkley who is a zoning expert that will be there on behalf of Hinkley. So we have the final senior housing plot to sign.
With a special pen?
With a special pen. See, you remember. That's good. So this is four lots that are gonna be combined into one lot for senior housing. And Tom went through this with all of you, correct? Okay.
He went over all of it with me this morning. Those were the ones that were rezoned, correct? Those four?
There's only one that was rezoned.
Okay.
Very special pen. Also have Peebles. That one is Serenity Court. That one's senior, that one's Serenity Court. I don't know if senior housing is up here. I thought I had printed it.
I don't think, I didn't see senior housing. I just saw the-
Nope, you didn't print it.
Print house.
These are the renderings of what the senior housing project will look like, though. You can have one of each if you want. Okay.
This is date and sign.
I will take care of that, sir.
But you would.
Thank you. And the Peebles property, did you guys take a peek at this one? And I'm standing because there's a lot of paper here.
Yes.
Mr. Peebles continues to sell off his little pieces of property of his large land. He is selling to the Cruz family, who live on Tamaran Trail, and they are acquiring six acres on the south side of their property.
They have a nice big backyard, I saw that. Six acres now?
Just wanna make sure I get them all.
Could you tell us where his properties are? Serenity Court and Senior Township?
Yes, I will go through that with you.
I do know they're in Hinkley.
Oh, yeah. Small world.
He's troublemaker, you. Jack's a little spicy today.
Today?
Actually, I'm on Zoom, so I might be able to share my screen while these guys sign. And then we can, I can show you specifically Heather. Okay, let me see if I can pull it up here.
Where's Serenity Courts?
I'm gonna show you. I'm gonna actually pull it right up on my screen.
Are you, are you confused by it, Cam?
Okay.
What was that word?
It's where we all go to live.
Okay, you guys see it in there?
Art Happy, please.
Here's Center Road. Right here. Do you see my mouse moving? This is Arborcrest. I know, I need a pointer.
I need a pointer.
This is Arborcrest right here. This lot was, was purchased by one man. He intent, he is intentionally building homes primarily for his family to live in Hinkley. We're hoping that Lot 15 and Lot 1 are not built on, that they're just stayed the way they are in conservation, almost. Just for, as a entrance, if you will. But it's just these lots here. And then initially, this plan was that the lots were gonna come off this road, Don Prey off Country Brook. And we had a lot of people calling, texting, emailing, really upset about that. I know, I know. But there's a lot of water back here. So there's a lot of wetlands. There are rivers formations through there. I believe there's a pond. And so it wasn't suitable for him to build in this, on this Lot 16.
How many acres is that?
This one's 20. 16 is 20 acres. So he has a cul-de-sac here at the end of Down Prey. And my guess is that he would hope to put his, his one lone house here at some point. But this is Serenity Court. Now, this has been talked about since January last year.
There's no sign on this one.
I thought there weren't a lot of them.
It's not, it's not a Hinkley Township regulation. It's designated by ODOT. So they are part of the Medina County Planning Commission process, and they will designate if that will happen or not. They may push it. They may say, hey, it needs to go a little further south.
So this is a preliminary plat?
It's a preliminary.
So it's a preliminary plat at Medina County?
It's not finalized.
Very early stages, and comment hasn't even come in yet, right?
Correct. And then I'm gonna show you senior housing because Heather specifically asked me about that.
When is that on the?
Senior housing?
No, the Serenity Court. When's that on the county planning agenda?
March. Okay, here is senior housing. You've got Center Road and West 130th Street. The only, somebody had asked if which plots were rezoned. Only this plot was rezoned. And so this is the proposed senior housing. It'll have egress here on 303, as well as West 130th Street. There's a clubhouse with a pool and all of the, I don't remember how many.
No.
Units there are, no.
Your wife used to put in there.
Not me. Any questions on that one? They changed this. Initially, this lot, lot was incorporated in it. But once the BZA said that they legally had stated they could do it without a variance, that lot was removed. And then this is Mr. Bindoffer's lot right here.
Could you put your cursor on where it's at?
Well, it's, it's his plot. That's okay.
The, are you gonna run into, I know this was discussed at one point. You have this, if Serenity goes in, you're gonna, how close are those two?
They won't be super close. Serenity would be all the way over here, I believe.
I'm just thinking of-
Traffic, yeah. ODOT's looking at it. This is, and Serenity is in the preliminary stages, so it's not in the final site review at all.
So ODOT hasn't granted them the 303? Curb cut yet, right?
No.
Okay.
Nothing here is final. Okay? You are welcome, and... Yes, sorry about that. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get through my, I have a million things tonight. We're gonna be here all day. Okay, so we talked briefly about the cul-de-sacs potentially allowed in Serenity Court, which I just showed you. It's one street. And we have to approve it by trustee approval if we are to allow that. It's not saying that they have to do it, or they don't have to do it. It's just saying that we, as the trustees, would allow for it as long as the maintenance is covered by the association, the Homeowners Association. So I just wanted to get your opinion on it because I'm typing my notes to the Planning Commission, which have to be in tomorrow. And I thought this is a prime opportunity to see what your thoughts were on allowing or not allowing for cul-de-sacs in that Serenity Court. Do you want me to pull it back up? It's this project.
No, I'm, I'm okay with it, providing that they do what Mike said about the, the base and the underdrain.
Which is in my planning notes.
Okay.
I am okay with it because I like islands, but I, I think that was a good point that Jack brought up about the drainage. So if that's already in your notes.
It is, and I'm just trying to find my notes to make sure it's in there. Which one, Serenity Court?
Their home, that's just the name of it.
It's just the name of the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, Serenity Court's just the name of the road. And this gentleman just loves Hinkley, and I think he found it serene, so he called it Serenity Court.
It's, it's not like Phase 2.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, I know.
It was where the senior housing that Mr. Terry wanted to put in. That's where it is. Okay, so I will make sure that I stress the drainage for that. And at this time, I-
And the base.
And the base, and... Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to-
Resolution?
A resolution to allow for Serenity Court to have islands in the cul-de-sacs if the, if the developer chooses and if the Homeowners Association accepts maintenance of such.
Second.
Second in by Asher.
Asher?
Yes.
Swedick?
Does the resolution need to address drainage and the base?
That, that's going to be, you're just, all you're saying is you're allowing this cul-de-sac or not. And what you put in your notes can be-
Okay, yes.
Recommendation.
Thank you.
Augustine?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, guys. I've got a lot going on.
You're gonna, you're gonna send me that language that you just said?
Sure thing. I just typed it in my notes to the Planning Commission. Okay, and we've got the quarterly report for zoning. Does everyone have that in front of them? Exciting times here in Hinkley Township with zoning. My friend Suzanne gave me the Greek version. Parcel lot splits. 27 parcel combo lot splits at about $1,350 for the third. This is for the third quarter, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize. We're still working on the fourth quarter. There was some financial dis-
We've got it figured out.
Okay, great.
Yes.
And of those parcel lot splits, there are, because I said 27, which is a lot, those are all related to the Pine Valley Estates project. We have approximately five accessory buildings, six decks, eight in-ground pools, and nine new homes constructed in the third quarter. Does anyone have any questions? For a total of $11,810. Did you get one of these? Oh, you have.
I do.
Any questions?
No.
No. And that's all I have for zoning. Thank you for your patience. This is the language if you want to write it. And Monique? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so today, before the meeting, we had the opportunity to interview for our administrative office assistant and recording secretary. There was one candidate, Lynn Rotunda. Do we want to open up our discussion about Lynn? Suzanne, Suzanne seemed really comfortable with her.
I think she would be a great fit in Hinkley Township. She's very outgoing. She's already working with the Hinkley Women's Club, facilitating being their secretary. I don't know if she's a secretary. Is she filling in for you as a secretary? She's filling in for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And she- And she-
Wearing many hats.
She's very good with technology, and I think she would be a great assistant to Suzanne.
I agree.
That's just mine.
I, I agree.
Jack?
All in favor?
Do I need to make a motion?
Yes.
To, okay.
To hire.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to hire Lynn Rotunda as the part-time administrative office assistant and recording secretary.
Oh, do we want an effective date? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we remember we kind of talked about playing with that with Suzanne leaving.
Okay.
When do we want to hire her, effective?
I was gonna do it effective Tuesday. Because that way she could get a couple of days with Suzanne before Suzanne leaves.
I think Suzanne leaves, does she leave, she doesn't-
She leaves Thursday, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth? That'd be fine with me?
So, effective, um, this Tuesday, February 22nd, if that's it, at a rate of $15 an hour?
Second.
And that's, that's for the 20-hour maximum?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And Martha, we had kind of, I told her, with the recording secretary, because she does have some, some experience with that, I said maybe for that first meeting, for the work session, you can do your minutes and she can do her minutes, and then see where they fall out.
And I'll give her an example, like, like you guys saw, the work session minutes are just basically a synopsis of, of the conversation. So they, they, I think they took me about less than an hour to do. For point of reference.
Should we make it a monthly maximum, so in the event that she's doing?
It's a hundred.
It's a, yeah.
It's a hundred hours.
Hundred hours a, a month.
So it's just, we say it's the average of 20 hours.
And if we have to up it, we'll make a, a motion to amend it or change it based on need, but she's just starting.
What's in the organizational minutes then?
She's just starting, it shouldn't be too much right now.
So my question is, is that who, I mean, are you guys going to schedule the assistant then? Or how, who determines the hours, I guess?
We, well, we didn't really talk about that, it was Suzanne talked about-
Suzanne's been the primary contact for that.
I mean, she said she's very flexible with the hours. She would be very flexible with the hours that we needed her, and Suzanne let her know that there is flexibility. You know, if, if she's here when Suzanne's here.
So no set schedule then, no set schedule.
Not a schedule.
No.
No, we actually encourage the flexibility, especially with the learning curves, like she may not need to come in full 20 hours.
Well, and then I guess to my, that's my point, you know, I guess who's, who's the determination of, of the amount?
We, we deliberately talked about that in the interview, is that to be able to go below that, that 20 hours as well as potentially above it, but not right now, but above it, because she's just learning.
Okay, so it's basically in accordance with the organizational minutes?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay, perfect.
So I will call Lynn.
Okay, so we have a second on that one?
We got a second from Swadek, we did not vote.
Thank you, okay, Asherle?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
And Augustine?
Yes, very excited to have her on board, and I'm sure Suzanne will be as well.
Suzanne's just gonna be so excited to get some support in that office.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So a couple of weeks ago, trustee Augustine had come to me with a list of old email addresses that are not currently being used by the township. We were just informed that we are going to have to in June or July start paying for these email addresses. So several of them are already suspended, which means nobody's can access them, people can't log in, they can't access them, some of them are not. So I would like to, to make a motion to suspend the email addresses as previous Hinkley Township personnel, which are within the township record retention period, retention policy period. I'm just gonna give you the last names of the accounts that we need to suspend. Let's Go, Medwood, Miller, Christine, Kalina, Burns, Camps, Schulte, Miller, Rick, and Salmon.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And at your convenience, can you email me that?
Yes, I will email it to you, we also have a copy, but I'm gonna email, I'll, I'll email it to Suzanne also.
Okay, so those are the suspended ones.
Those are the suspended.
Okay, perfect.
Do you want this?
No, wait for the email.
Okay.
And what's, yeah, what Brian said he's going to do with these suspended emails, he is going to give them a generic password, so they're all gonna have the same generic password, so that if we need to access it for any reason, we have that on all of our suspended emails.
Right, and it's important for us to have a better idea of how many email addresses we're gonna have to support with that new system, so thanks for doing that.
Okay, next, I would like to make a motion to delete the email addresses of previous Hinkley Township personnel, including email communications in accordance with the township record retention policy. Barrett, Heather, newcomer, Sambor, Peterlin, David, FD Operations, Kolasky, Toff, Baxter, Landis, Dan, McVeigh, Mordasky, Zarensky, Grevasi, Rosenbach, Baker, Watchna, Chinachilio-
Chumaliski.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Mac, Barrett, Sean, Erskine, Morgan, Ward, and Potts.
Second.
Uh, Asherle?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
So just for information, there were so many of those because the fire department at one time had our, had the Gmail addresses, and then they switched over to Hinkley Fire. So is Suzanne preparing that for the schedule, the record retention documentation? Just gonna-
Yes.
Put all those on the-
Yes.
Spreadsheet that we, okay, so is-
Yeah, and she wanted to talk to you also.
She couldn't, I'm ready, yeah, okay.
She wanted to talk to you because she was asking me questions that I think-
Don her eyes and cross her teeth.
I think so, well, she told me, she said Martha was really concerned about something she did at one time, and I said, well Suzanne, I don't know what to tell you, because it follows our records retention policy.
No, I don't even know what she's talking about.
Well, she was concerned about Sambor's, and I said, it's been four years.
Sambor?
So, yeah, she was concerned about deleting that one.
No, no, I'll talk to her.
So, thank you.
Yeah, you guys-
Martha's the keeper of the records.
That's why. Sambor is- Mr. Jingling, the keeper of the keys, Martha's the keeper of the records.
Yeah.
That takes six years.
Wow. What's going on up here? We've lost our minds since we've been here since three.
Okay. You can proceed with the, the deletion of, of those.
Okay, so we're good on all those, okay. So this next one, I'm gonna make a motion, but if we want to discuss it, after talking with Brian Blacko, moving forward, when a township employee separates from the township, I would like to make a motion to suspend their email account on the last day worked. This will help maintain records retention, but help keep our server secure as well.
Okay, I think it's a good idea. Often, oftentimes when we get another, a records request, like for instance, we got one at the beginning of this year, where we had to go in and access trustee, former trustee Kalina, former trustee Burns's emails. That gives us that flexibility to do so, so I think that's perfect, okay.
Will you send me that language or repeat it, I'm sorry?
Uh, yes, a motion to suspend their email account on the last day worked. Is that all we need? Instead, I don't have to add in the, because I added it, this will allow to maintain records retention, but help keep the server secure, you want all that?
Last day of employment.
Last day of employment?
Yeah.
Okay, I will email it to you tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so there was a second on that?
Yes, by Swadek.
Okay, Asherle?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. And one more thing on this topic, something that Brian and I talked about is that we, I'd like to suggest adding another administrator on the page. So it's someone who can add email addresses, and someone who can suspend emails, it's someone who can delete emails, so we don't have to rely on Brian to do all of that.
It's a great idea, I'm just trying to figure out who could do that, I mean, obviously Suzanne's been our go-to for most things, but that woman has got some-
Right, I didn't know if we, if Suzanne could.
Can we just make it the admin at Hinkley TWP, or is it actually a person?
I think it's an, I, I don't know, I will ask him, I got the impression it's an actual person.
Because maybe our new hire ends up being fantastic.
That would be too open, you wouldn't wanna-
Yeah, no, I agree.
Be specific.
Well, why don't you just wait and see how it works out with your new hire?
That's what I think.
I don't think you really have to name anybody, that's not, you know, it's not a, it's a, it's a job, job duty of whomever. And then maybe whoever you hire for the website might be able to be added on for some of those functions too, to take over for Brian, he's been doing it a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, so my last motion is going to be, so we no longer have to make motions to suspend, but we will still have to make motions to delete, correct?
Yes.
Okay, which is fine, we can do that like maybe once every six months, you know?
Well, you, you, you know, what I talked to Suzanne about is having scheduled record retention motions.
Okay.
So we're, you know, we're working on a number of, a number of documents in different ways, and then she puts them on the sheet that's required, so we have that documentation. And otherwise it gets confusing if we just throw these things in hither and fro. So we talked about whether it's quarterly or biannually.
Okay.
And so you kind of just make a list, and, and we'll add it to that chart.
Okay.
And, and go from there.
Which there won't be any kind of urgency, because we're not paying for them, once they're suspended, there's, there's no urgency there.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that it's within the required retention period, we gotta be real careful with that one.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to accept Jen Amburn's resignation as proctor and recording secretary for the steering committee effective March 2nd, 2022.
And I just want to clarify that that's proctor as a whole and recording secretary.
Correct.
For the steering committee. Second. Very sad about it, though.
Yeah, yeah, she said, I asked her actually yesterday, and I said, so what was it? Because I know she's super busy with a lot, and I think it was adding that the recording secretary was probably the straw that broke the camel's back for her, so maybe we'll get her back one day as proctor. But she's gotta be true to herself and make sure she has the amount of time at home that her family deserves, so.
Absolutely.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. So I would also like to make a motion to fill the position for the township proctor and recording secretary for the steering committee.
So in my agenda items, and actually it's not on here, because I added it. In speaking with Martha, kind of about some of the past practices specific to steering committees, it was thought that maybe it might be a better idea to hire a court reporter for the next three steering committee meetings. That's a complete outside source.
Okay.
Um, and so I have it in your packets. It's an email from Christine. And I, I don't know if you want to talk about it now, if we can jump to it later.
We can jump to it later if you want.
Okay.
Um, I'm on a roll. I'd like to make a motion to fill the position for township proctor.
So you-
I have an idea.
I, I actually asked Jen, and this is another thing that I have that's not on my agenda, I asked her for dates and times that she's available, because I really feel like everyone in this township who works for the township needs to know how to proctor a meeting, that's just my opinion. They need to know how to open it up, they need to know how to start it, set it up, get it going, hit record, do whatever. It's really not that difficult, is what she tells me. I've been doing it here and there, and it's not horrible, but it's very useful and helpful to have her do it, obviously, when I'm running a meeting, not to have to do it. What are your thoughts? Do you want to hire someone to do it, or do you feel like our BZA and our zoning commission and the trustees should all kind of know how to do it?
I, I agree that everybody should know how to do it. I don't necessarily know if I want to rely on everybody to do it, just because when you feel, and maybe it's just me, maybe I do have a little bit of ADD in me, but I mean, when I'm, when I'm focusing on, you know, proctoring a meeting, if I had to do that, and answering questions and maintaining, you know, my agenda, I would not want to feel split that way personally, that's, that's my opinion. Now, I will piggyback on that by saying also, if we are, if we were to move forward with hiring someone as a proctor, maybe it's not necessarily an hourly wage, it's, you know, like a $25 for a zoning meeting, $25 or $30 for a work session meeting, something like that, so it's not a hourly, hourly wage.
You said you have an idea of someone, and I think I know who your idea of someone might be.
I bet you do. I bet you do, I bet we, we talked to, I bet we talked to someone.
Poor Jack.
So.
Are you on board, Jack?
You know who we're talking about?
No.
I don't know, can we even say that without actually posting?
We probably need to, well, I mean, we could approach that person, since we just interviewed.
Interviewed that person. Are we on the same page now?
I'm not sure that that's a confident yes, is that a confident yes, sir?
I'd say it was.
That's, that was-
That person wouldn't have to be here.
Right.
Exactly, and that's what I was thinking when I got Jen's email last week, I was thinking, oh.
Well, why don't you reach out and see if that's something that that person's interested in, and we will go from there.
Okay.
On that plan?
Yep. Awesome, what would, um, do we want to talk about compensation if I'm going to reach out to that person?
Well, obviously availability comes first, but I like the idea, right now I don't, I think Jen's fifteen dollars an hour.
I don't think it can be a per-meeting fee, considering we're on eight o'clock now.
We've been, she was, yeah, Jen was on it.
And it started at three. Three thirty.
Three thirty.
Three thirty. Okay, it was just, and I think I was thinking that because of who I was thinking, you're already doing it anyway, so. I think that was why I was thinking that way, so.
Everyone else is smiling now.
And they weren't even in there.
Right.
You have to be an active participant, right, and you couldn't just record it and get up and leave, right? You have to be sitting there the whole time and-
Right, because if something, if something were to go wrong, or, yeah.
Would it be really smart to make-
We have a committee member doing it, because you're in the meeting and someone's trying to get admitted, you're not watching, see.
I've done it, though, I've proctored the meeting while sitting here, yeah, and it's not easy. Yeah. Okay.
You could, you know, you have citizens to do it, they're, they're coming anyways. You know, maybe you just do a training and you ask people to volunteer to do it.
I think we'll go with employee.
Heather, you don't like that idea?
Oh, what idea?
Awesome, I think, I think it's, I think it's a great idea to say that citizens would just be volunteering, you know, to do it, but what happens if here we are citizenless at a meeting, because we have 25 people in, in the waiting room, trying to be admitted, so.
And who knows what legislation it'll bring, I mean, if it's a virtual world again, we need somebody who can proctor.
And we may run into, it may come to the point where they can record based upon whatever the desire is, if your meeting is recorded and posted somewhere, instead of having individuals do it now.
And that is something we discussed, we just gotta get the website updated, so we have that. Okay, Monique, I think you have one more.
Do we vote on that?
Uh, we do. Well, we just made a decision just to call.
So I'll just, I'll reach out to her and- Okay. To be tabled, okay. I also received an email yesterday from BNI. BNI is Hinkley chapter organizer, Ray Felton, he's a resident. BNI is like a networking group, is what I'm taking it, it's business owners and professionals that are creating a networking chapter in Hinkley, Ohio. So Ray Felton is a resident, and he is requesting the ongoing rental of the meeting room every Thursday morning from 7:30 till 9:00 AM, so only, only an hour and a half. This is similar to Mr. Gibson's railroad meetings, and because it's going to be a standing reservation for a short amount of time every single week, I wanted to see your feelings and your thoughts on if I make a motion to rent the meeting room monthly, up to five times a month, at a rate of $100, plus $50 deposit, a refundable deposit for cleaning, if the hall is left in clean condition. If the room is not used, the renter forfeits the rental fee. I was thinking, you know, we're not talking about somebody who wants to come and rent the room for four hours for a baby shower, or a wedding shower, for that $100 fee that we normally charge them. This is gonna be a standing reservation in the meeting room every week when it's not currently being used.
I was told that the railroad group just donates, they're nonprofits, that really doesn't apply, they kind of use it like the chamber uses it.
Yeah, but Mr., it's an outside group, that's the-
But it's a 501(c)(3), right? So just like the chamber, they come in and they get their-
Probably BNI is a 50, is that a nonprofit?
I don't, no.
I don't think it is.
No.
I don't know, I just think the meeting room should be- I don't know. I just think the meeting room should be open to people as needed. That's kind of how we always had it. Um, Ray used to sit here with his coffee club every day. You could come in and join him or not. I mean.
Well, part of the issue is Mr. Felton can come in and reserve it. Okay.
That's what I was gonna say. How long does he want to do this for?
I'm going.
So I, when Monique called me about it, I'm like, I'm not gonna sit there and accept a check every single week and then have to refund him a deposit every single week.
Right.
If he wants to use it, we have to come up with terms that will provide uh, the rental of the room on a longer term if it's going to be consistent.
So that's, we actually thought it would be um, simpler for the accounting because it's only one check once a month. If it's the check for $100 and then one refund once a month. And let's say for instance, they only use it three times that month. We still get the $100 even though they're not using the room.
And it's all Hinckley residents?
Uh, I do not know they are all Hinckley residents. That, I do not know that. I know.
They don't have to be Hinckley residents to attend a meeting.
Well, I'm just thinking if you're a Hinckley resident and you want to bop in here and do something, I mean, we use this room for so many different things. Records, requests, all kinds.
I'll be honest. I think a Hinckley resident would appreciate $1,200 a month.
I mean, we rented it out to residents for the $100 normally. So I'm to, to keep it, what I'm kind of thinking is fair is we're still, they're not just going to get it for free because if somebody wanted to come here for their baby shower or wedding shower, they would have to pay the, the price for that. But let's kind of balance this. It's not a four hour event that they're trying to do. So I'm trying to.
Are they going to be using this virtual equipment?
I don't think so.
Is it possible just to put them in the boardroom? And is there a different structure for the boardroom rental?
Um, I don't think they will fit in the boardroom because they're talking about it's a minimum right now of 15.
Yeah.
I mean, the alternative is Mr. Felton can come in every Monday.
Right.
Take up Suzanne's time, fill out an application, give her $100. And then on Friday, every Friday, I'm going to have to prepare a refund receipt back to Mr. Felton. And then I will be doing that and Suzanne will be doing that every day because nothing prevents Mr. Felton from renting this room as a township resident if it's available. And we have no rules as to who's invited in the room. When we have a baby shower or we have a Christmas party, um, we're not asking to see ID at the door. It's so.
It just ends up being an accounting thing.
I see it as a wonderful way to get $1,200 toward the miscellaneous non-operating revenue in the general fund for a room that's empty.
Okay. So just go through it with me again. What is your fee structure? I'm trying to understand what the fee structure is.
Um, a monthly rate of $100 plus a $50 deposit for cleaning, refundable if the hall is left in clean condition.
And if they only show up three times that month rather than every Thursday, we don't give them any money back. They've rented it for the month.
So the form says the meeting, town hall meeting is $100.
We, we, this would be amending the organizational minutes. This would be an amendment.
Right. Because it's not on here. It's not, it doesn't fit our current renting.
No, that's what I'm saying though. So we're saying $100 for five uses, up to five?
For the month.
You guys can work on the language. You can determine that it has to be scheduled at the same time, the same date. And that would prevent other people from coming in and just reserving four different times a month or something.
I mean, I see what you're looking at there. But you, you could say $200 for the month, but they may say at $200 a month, non-refundable. And we're just, you know, we'll go someplace and get coffee for an hour and a half. I mean, to Martha's point, it's a guaranteed.
Right. And it's only an hour and a half.
And I feel like, I feel like we're helping them out, but then they're also helping us out. So that was, that was kind of my take on it. So that's why I wanted to discuss it um, with you both. And I knew that it was amending the organizational meeting minutes. That's why I wanted, or meeting, that's why I wanted to talk to Martha ahead of time. See, I'm like, can I even do this? Can we change something that we just voted on last month?
You're basically, what you're doing is you're add, adding another fee structure onto the existing fee structure. We did the same thing when people started asking to rent Brungers Park, the pavilion. We had never had that in our fee structure before and we're like, oh, people want to use it? Okay. We'll accommodate them. We don't need the cleaning fee, you know, that kind of thing. And you know, you guys probably, while you're on the topic, you should probably consider it for the old fires department bay too. Because you know, I guess there have been issues on whether it's left in the same condition. And no matter who the person is, we, I guess we should be probably charging some type of cleaning fee to assure that it's left in the condition that they entered it in. Um.
It's as if you read my mind because I'm looking at this form for rentals and we are using that fire station more than sometimes we're using this room.
Yeah.
And you know, I don't know if there's any liability issues on rentals and things like that. We may have to be more specific about. We may need to have that form filled out for that use, charge or no charge because it, you know, it protects us. And it is being used a lot more than it ever was. So I don't know. Maybe this is more a, a work session issue and Mr. Felton could go ahead and, you know, rent it for whatever he needs or you guys can move on on that. But I think the broader question as to making sure every facility that we utilize and rent out is, is covered.
So if we um, if we table this and we don't um, vote on it today, so they're just renting the room this Thursday for $100.
Yeah, I don't want to do that to them. I mean, I, I would agree to the $100 with the $50 refundable amount if left in clean condition, just to get them started while we adapt new language.
I agree. I don't want to do that to them either. That's why.
You could make a, you like to Melissa's point, you can just make a motion doing this and pending further um, language. That's right. Be discussed on the organizational minutes. Like I said, it's, I mean, it's a nice source of revenue. We don't make much on this room and.
And they can come in and make coffee and have, you know.
Usually so busy here in Seven Mile.
You'll probably open up more.
You're wrong.
No, that's Melissa. She's the, Melissa and Suzanne, the early risers.
Oh gosh.
Um, so make the motion with and just add on pending future language changes.
You don't even need that in the motion. You can, you can make your motion and you may amend it later to, for that.
Okay. So just make the motion again as I did the first time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to rent the meeting room monthly up to five times per month at a rate of $100 plus a $50 deposit for cleaning, refundable if the hall is left in clean condition.
And, and then put your terms that it has to be the same day, the same time and the same.
Schedule.
Yeah, it has to be the same schedule.
The rental must be, must stick to the same schedule.
Day and the week, day and time of the week must remain the same.
Must, the rental must remain the same day and time of the week.
And we'll work on that language.
We'll just add a term of things to do.
That's pretty rough. There's a lot of last minute stuff today.
Got a second.
Oh, can I get a second?
Well, let's, just for the sake of argument.
Not making the motion again.
They come in the first day and, and they leave it a mess. And we keep his $50 and they come in the second time and leave it a mess.
The second time, we're going to leave a thing of wipes, some cleaning supplies.
I, I think the rental agreement says that we can with, we can null and void the rental agreement if there's egregious, I don't know.
Second the motion.
But you know what I mean?
Second it by sweat.
Yeah. We can pull that. Does that cover?
Well done, sir.
To cover the wild party and the donut sprinkles?
They said donuts every once in a while, not every.
The donut shop would open, we would, they probably wouldn't be.
And he mentioned the donut shop opening. Yes.
Switek.
Yes.
Augustine.
Yes. Okay. One more thing I just wanted to bring up. It's not on my agenda. And that is um, with the inclement weather that we've been having, prior to the last storm, trustee Augustine made the decision to close the administrative offices on Thursday and Friday and notified trustee Sweattick and I of the decision. So knowing that we're only halfway through winter right now, I wanted to discuss protocol moving forward. Um, is it something that we want to follow the school system schedule for closing or um, do we elect someone to make that decision?
That's what I told Suzanne. I said, in the future, I think that following the school district really is probably the smartest way to gauge roads for our staff. What are your thoughts? By schools district, I mean Highland School District, just because we have Brunswick School District in Hinckley as well.
I honestly, I don't necessarily know how I feel about that. That does, and, and I just brought that up as an example, by the way, in there is um, using the school systems. It's, there's a lot of different factors there that schools are closed on. You know, it's very different um, driving a bus through, through some um, bad, bad roads versus driving a car. We all obviously live in town, so we don't have a far commute to go. So I don't necessarily know if that's the way to go. And I also will say, I have not been here very long. So I do not know how much work Suzanne, because it's primarily Suzanne. I don't know how much work Suzanne has that she could actually take home and put in, you know, the time that she needs.
Oh, she can. She can. She does. Sometimes we get our emails on Saturday morning, which is not a workday for her. Um, she is very comfortable working remote and so is Mr. Wilson. So you have to remember, he's, he does not live in Hinckley. Um, he comes in three days a week. And the reason that we felt really confident in calling that specific Thursday, Friday was because the zoning commission had decided to shut down their meeting. And we knew that weather was going to be so bad that no one was going to be out anyway. So it's not like they're knocking on the door at Hinckley Town Hall saying, let me in. I've got a, you know, zoning application.
Right. I understand that. And I don't necessarily think that it was a bad idea that it was closed specifically on Thursday. I just want to say moving forward, the protocol.
Right. No, I totally understand. I'm just saying that's kind of how we made that decision. It's not, regularly it would just be made, I think in past practices, then the chair makes the decision. But I, I told Suzanne, my, my opinion is it might be a good rule of thumb to use the school district. And they all have the ability to work remotely. And by all, I mean Suzanne and Tom Wilson. Tom Z comes in maybe once or twice a week. He's not here regularly. Now we've just hired Lynn. I'm sure she can work remotely. We have, you know, the ability for everyone to do that.
What do you think, Jen?
Prior to implementing it, maybe just a, you know, as simple as a phone call to each one of us to make sure that we're all on board and. I don't think that would be an issue. Do you think?
Um, no. So that would be the protocol?
Yeah, that if, for, for whatever reason, if they decide to, to close that, you know, they reach out and say, look.
That's my, my concern. If, if there's someone, let's say it's Melissa, is calling you to say, are you on?
Calling you for that because it's sunshine law.
It's a.
No, I'm saying.
No, no, that's not a sunshine law violation.
I can't, I can't call him and say, what's your opinion on it?
You can call him and ask him if we can open the town hall. That is not a sunshine law violation.
I'm just not risking it.
You want me to call? You call me.
I mean, Suzanne has generally been the conduit and I have no problem with her calling you.
All right, that's fine.
Guys, we've never, I mean, let's see, 15, 16 years. I think I can, those two days added on to the one day I ever remember this place being closed. Now people have come in late or they just say, I'm not coming in. Um, and you know, you shut down the town hall and you got a zoning meeting or BZA meeting or something and the sun comes out at two o'clock and the roads are clear. They weren't clear for the bus at six o'clock in the morning, but they're clear. You're going to shut everything down and inconvenience people who made it in their schedules. You need to give yourself some latitude on, on this. And I don't think the school um, schedule gives you that latitude. I, I think just common sense gives you latitude and.
I would be more inclined to look at what the county is doing. If the county is closing down offices, maybe then we talk about it, but.
And the county did shut everything down.
You know, and, and again, that was a, that was a significant potential, you know, storm potential and everything like that. And, and the police can assist with that too. But um, if, I don't know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Um.
Well, it's just something for further consideration. Why don't we just leave it at that for right now?
That's reasonable.
We don't have any more um, weather like that. And I'm a snowboarder, but I couldn't even go out to snowboard because it was that bad. So.
It was, Thursday was horrible. I, I, I agree. And I'm not saying that I, I, I just wanted to um, see if we wanted to develop a protocol. That was all. But let's move on from it and discuss another day. That is all I have.
Mr. Sweattick.
I'm gonna be quick.
Promise.
Do I need to make a motion for this, Martha, for?
Yes, sir.
Motion to request appropriations for Ohio Utilities Protection Service, annual assessment fees for 2022 at a cost of $574.78.
Second. Asher.
Yes.
Switek.
Yes.
Augustine.
Yes.
I received an email from Alzheimer's Support. It's a, a free service in Hinckley that assists families. It, it's a no cost organization, but they're asking about uh, possibly putting something on our website. And I'm thinking that because of what discussion we had with other individuals, maybe to direct them Chamber of Commerce.
I got the same email and I asked Suzanne what our past practice has been for something like this. Um, the bottom line is if I'm looking for Alzheimer's information, I'm not going to Hinckley Township's website to get it. Uh, we, we just can't.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I, I don't even know if the chamber is going to accept it, but it's something we could definitely send to them.
All right, I'll turn that. Um, then I was contacted uh, by Medina County Economic Development to see if I was interested in some information on the tax abatement program. And uh, I had a very nice uh, probably half hour with Bethany down there via Zoom. And she gave me a presentation on it and I'm willing to share that with you if you'd like it. The uh, the application is, is what they provided. But it was very interesting uh, as far as tax abatements go. And there's only certain areas in Hinckley that are available for it. And you know, one pre-91, I think it was, and then post.
Ninety.
Was it?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three. So if you're interested in that, let me know.
Is there an application?
There, there's a, yeah, she, she sent, I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Then the uh.
You skipped over perk company. Was that, was that the conversation you had with Mike? Okay. Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Then the old fire station wall renovation, I heard back from the architect. The only thing in the documents, Martha, are the changing the names of the trustee and the uh, couple of dates in there. So if we're doing that, I don't think we need to go to the prosecutor's office again, correct? We need to determine when we would like to have, do a site visit and a bid date.
Okay.
For those two. So.
Do you want? Do you want to do, are you gonna?
I don't think the trustees typically go to the site visit, correct?
No, I, I think Jim went, but it's best to have Mike do it.
All right, I'll, I'll work out a date with him then.
Well, that's part of the bid and everything. So are you prepared to put it out for bid today? Or do you want to do a little more work at the work session?
I'll finish it. Yeah, I'll finish it with get the dates and stuff from.
Okay. And then you put it out to bid at the March 1st meeting?
That'd be great.
Perfect.
The other was uh, in. The other was in the bid, it talks about obtaining the bid electronically through the Hinckley website. And I, you had made a comment, Martha, about reaching out to Suzanne. Is that the same thing, just going through the website?
So just like with Jess's SCBA bid, the language says that's available for pickup, we get them to sign the sheet, or they can access it on the website. So it's basically just a PDF.
The language now says electronically through Hinckley Township website, hinckleytownship.org under the News and Events tab, Township News.
That's where you want to put it, yes. It would just be a PDF that could get downloaded.
And then the, the last thing was the recommendation to up the bid estimate. It's currently at $57,000. He said, take it an additional $2,000. We just make it $60,000?
Smart.
Yeah, that, that, that would work. I'm thinking about the 10%. That's, that's why, that's the only reason I'm hesitating.
What did the last one come in at? Because didn't they come in super high?
They came in over, but it did.
Well, 53, that was in roughly?
It was 67, I think there was one.
Yeah, I thought they were in the 60s. So is 60 going to be enough?
Well, you have a, you have a 10% margin.
Okay.
You know, you have a threshold, you can go over and under. So that, I mean, I think that that's reasonable.
Okay.
Okay. And then the last thing I have is, I got a call from trustee in Sharon Township, Brian Gushen, inviting us to, they want to hold a meeting with Sharon, Granger, and Hinckley to discuss the possibility of potential for sharing resources and, and developing some cost savings between the three townships for things that are, that we're all doing. And I, they want to know if we have any interest in attending. I'd like to. But if all the trustees are going from the three townships, it would have to be all of us.
I'd be interested to hear, hear what they have to say.
What kind of resources are they thinking?
He didn't go into a whole lot of detail that there, I'm not certain for sure what he's, everything, but I'd, I'd definitely be interested if it could develop some cost savings for us. It'd be great.
Yeah, Brian's a great guy, and I would love to go and see.
Do they, do they use Zoom or anything for their meetings, or would it have to be here?
We can't, because if you have a special meeting.
Yeah, they want to hold it at Sharon.
It would have to be in person. We can't do any virtual, we wouldn't be able to interact.
Unless they go in or something.
Yeah. We'll have to go in person.
All right.
The location would just be Sharon or Granger, wherever we decide it to be, based on.
No, that's what I mean. I, I mean, have them all come here so we can, so people can Zoom if they want to. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If they don't have that option at Granger or Sharon.
I think that they just use a different option.
Okay.
But he, I'll tell them that we're interested and see if I can get some dates and times out of him.
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect.
That's all I have.
And Jen just didn't make it clear that would be a public.
Public meeting, correct.
Yeah, because of the.
Well, be a special meeting.
It, well, wherever it's hosted at.
Yeah.
It's, they, you know, it's, it's, it will be there.
We'd all have to advertise naming the host. Okay.
Open to the public.
Okay. Is that all for you, trustee Swedek?
That is.
All right, I've got stuff that's on my agenda and a couple of things that aren't the Citizen of the Year nominations are happening right now until March 14. We're asking that people send in a letter either to my attention or email me. I was a part of this committee back in 2018 and 2019, and with the passing of trustee Schulte was brought back into that swing of things. So I will be working with that committee. This time, and I'm just, for your information, in the past, the Citizen of the Year committee fees have been $200, roughly $200. It includes a plaque for the person who wins, and it's this framed piece here. And then to the right of the framed piece, there's another plaque that names all the Citizens of the Year that we've always had. And as you can see, that plaque is not here today because there's only one more spot left. So we thought it would be prudent to go ahead and order another one for next year, so we have it handy. And so I'm going to make a motion for a little higher cost than we normally make to allow for the purchase of the new plaque. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to appropriate funds for the Citizen of the Year Committee not to exceed, and I'm going to change my amount to $375.
Second.
Escherel?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Auguste?
Yes, and that comes out of the general fund, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I spoke with, I had a very nice zoning meeting with our zoning chairs, fire department chief, zoning inspectors, Suzanne, and myself about how we can streamline and increase communication and do just a better job internally of making sure that the BZA knows, knows what's going on with the zoning commission and vice versa. And with that said, we talked about potentially doing something that has been done in the past, where we send a BZA member to a zoning commission meeting and a zoning commission member to a BZA meeting as a liaison to understand the happenings. And I'd like to incorporate that again, not for every meeting, but for specific developments or projects that are coming through that are bigger and may be contentious, just so that everyone's on the same page. So I wanted to get your thoughts on that, so that we could potentially make a motion to pay the trustee or the liaisons for their time to work as liaisons. We have in our organizational meeting minutes that the zoning commission member who is designated to represent the zoning commission board will be by request of the zoning board chairman and approval of the trustee liaison. And that there's, there's, they would follow the regular fee structure. So I just wanted to see what your thoughts were on that.
Who would determine when they attend?
I think it would be based on trustee recommendation. And I could come in and let you know when we're thinking about doing it.
Well, I think in the past, it's been by the, whatever chairman of the board. So if the BZA needed a zoning commission liaison, they would request that with trustee approval. And then vice versa, if the zoning commission needed a BZA member present for their meeting, they would do the same.
Perfect.
So it's at the discretion of the chairperson of that board.
That's, that would work fine. And Martha, I can't find my paperwork, but I searched for this paragraph in our 2022 organizational meeting minutes and couldn't find it at all. I'm taking this language from the 2021 organizational meeting minutes. I wonder if we just didn't, like if it was a typo, we didn't put it in? Or did I just look over?
No, it's right here. On, it's right here on page three.
Okay.
The participation of the zoning commission, it's right there.
Okay. This has been done in the past. It's, you know, generally just something that we've kind of let go. And I think it's important just so that, you know, like, for instance, the zoning commission said, well, we would really like to have known, because sometimes they don't get the information right away because the minutes aren't improved right away, because there's so much space in between each meeting. And so they don't really know the happenings of the meeting unless they're attending the meeting. And so the liaison would serve as that person.
Has it been a problem that they've run into?
Yes, they were very upset last year with senior housing and even Drug Mart and Tire Max. They want, there wasn't enough communication between the two boards. And they're autonomous boards, so that liaison would be a good person to be able to go back and say, hey, well, by the way, the zoning commission approved the senior housing, but here are all the conditions that they gave.
So I'm sorry, I, would it be, there would be one liaison from the BZA and then one liaison from zoning, so they would?
Go back and forth.
Go back and forth.
And it doesn't have to be the same person.
But only as required.
As required. And we just want to make sure that they're getting reimbursed for their time, instead of just sitting in the audience, taking, taking the time and not getting their whopping $35.
Some meetings are shorter than others.
So I just.
I would, I would, that would be fine. I mean, if this is something that's been done in the past, and there is, we've seen a need for it, and I know especially in the last couple of years, there have been some, let's call them high-profile meetings.
Mostly where there's been the necessity is, is that when the BZA is trying to interpret the code, it's very helpful to have a zoning commission member there who can help them interpret the code and understand the thinking behind it. And that's why it's always been included under the zoning commission matrix.
Okay.
But to, to, you know, Melissa's point, there could also be like the ongoing hearings and meetings of a certain topic where it would be helpful to have the BZA member. And sometimes I just think the BZA member has to be careful what they say because they are a quasi-judicial board.
Well, I think the goal is for them not to say anything, but just report back to their.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, they need to understand what their role might be. It's more relevant, I guess, how it's been. But I'm not saying that it's not a good idea to, to do it the other way, too.
So if you guys are in agreement, I would change the organizational meeting minutes to reflect the other, because it's only one-sided right now.
Correct.
Do you agree, trustee Swedek?
I do.
We're changing a bunch of those organizations.
Are you ready, Martha?
Well.
I think I have extra copies.
Do you know what you can do? You don't have a matrix for the BZA. So you just want to do the same language, except do it.
Vice versa.
Board of Zoning Appeals member?
Yes.
Who is designated to represent.
Yep, at this time.
The BZA. I think, yes.
All right. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the organizational minutes to add.
Well, you're, yeah, you're ready. I'm sorry.
The participation of the Board of Zoning Appeals member who is designated to represent the Board of Zoning Appeals Board will be by request of the zoning commission chairman and approval by trustee liaison. Can I get a second?
Second, sorry.
And is that at the same rate as listed as for the BZA? You'll have to, what rate? Because right now, the zoning commission member that attends this liaison is at $25 a meeting.
We'll, we'll make it $25 a meeting as well, even though it's as easy as 35. I think that's fair.
All right. Got it.
Okay. Second it is amended?
Escherel?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Auguste?
Yes, thank you very much. That's going to be very helpful for both of our boards. Northern Medina County Chamber reached out. You both have that email in front of you as well. Kathy had asked if some, one of the trustees would represent Hinckley Township at the North Burn Medina County Chamber meeting on April 20th, between 11:30 and 1:00. I've been on this board where we've chosen someone to go to represent. I've been on this board where the chair goes. I'm happy to go if you would like. I just wanted to put it out there and see if either one of you had the idea to go as well. Last year, we all attended virtually, and trustee Burns spoke.
And what is this for?
It's just an update on what's happening in Hinckley Township, as well as Brunswick, Brunswick Hills, Valley City. They're asking for a speaker to represent Hinckley happenings.
Have wonderful time.
Yeah. Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, thank you. I will let them know. And. Buzzard Day is scheduled, ladies and gentlemen. It is March 20th at the New Hinckley Elementary School. All of the tickets are going to be bought ahead of time. It's pre-sale. So check out the website. That's my spiel for Buzzard Day. And by the website, I mean the Hinckley Chamber website. We get calls all the time here at Hinckley Township. They want to know about buzzards. They want to complain that Buzzard Day shouldn't be named Buzzard Day. That was a call we actually got today. Please contact the Chamber at HinckleyOhioChamber.com. All right. We got an email from Terri Sherry from the Medina County Health Department, and I just figured I would attack a couple of these things that are on my agenda. She is asking for the trustees to attend a meeting on Monday, March 7th, that will be held virtually. And I wanted to see what your thoughts were, if you all plan on attending, if you want to send one of us to attend. It's for the Medina County District Advisory Council Annual Meeting.
And it's on Zoom?
And it is on Zoom. They're asking for an elected official, otherwise we wouldn't be having this conversation. We could send Martha.
Been there, done that.
I was kind of going to plan on just zooming in anyway, so.
Well, we can all do it.
We could, yeah. That's why I'm just, I'm making sure that you're aware of it, seeing what you thought.
Okay.
Okay, back to Christina, who is our, Christine, who gave, who we have used in the past for court reporting, and this is specific to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meetings, which there are three more left. Christina has her rates here. It is a little costly, but it is an outside source that I think would be an unbiased third party that would benefit the process. In my, that's my opinion. She's $70 an hour, $5.50 per page for an hour hearing. Normally, it's 50-ish or so long pages, she said. So an hour would be $275 for the transcription plus $70 to be here, because she wants to be in person taking it. She will not work off of a recording.
This is for which meetings?
The Comprehensive Plan Steering Committees. Since Jen is no longer going to be serving as our recording secretary.
50 pages long?
There's, they're usually.
It's to BZA hearings.
Yeah. Or some type of thing where there's testimony.
Right. It's, and that's what she said. She said, sometimes with the recordings, she can't pick up who's speaking and what they're saying, and she's going to give you a really good account of what's happening for all future use. We get a records request 10 years from now. They want to know what happened at that Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. It's going to be documented the best we can, we could get it to be.
I mean, it makes Jen look like quite the bargain. And Jen's probably out there right now watching this meeting thing. What? Are you kidding me?
A court reporter to Jen.
I won't resign if they're going to pay me that.
But a court reporter is a very different.
Yes.
Being a little familiar with court reporters, $70 an hour is a pretty good rate, believe it or not. But when they always make all of their money in the number of copies of the transcripts that they record. So is it $70 an hour just for the court reporter to record stuff? And if they charge you additional amounts of money to transcribe, print, and provide you copies of that, that's what they make.
Yes, $270, $275 for the transcript.
We just need.
Just for the transcript?
We just need one copy. Because then we can make copies of the copy.
Yeah, their prices have gone up since the last time we used.
She's actually right in Brunswick, and she, like I said, we've used her in the past. And I, because, because of the level of what we're working on and how many people want to participate, I think that it's a good idea. That's just my opinion. I went back and looked at Jen's minutes from the last meeting and put another three hours into them.
Saved us a lot of money, though.
I did.
At the voting shape. It's, I just, I, I think, and.
You're going to deal with me.
I'm, I'm thinking out loud. I'm thinking out loud here. And this is that, you know, the meetings are recorded.
These are not, the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meetings are not recorded.
The first one was?
No, it wasn't. Maybe by an outside source, but not by us.
Right.
Okay, you know what, guys? Look at, read the, read the thing, though. She's $70 an hour, and then $5.50 per page. And she's using an estimate of 50 pages to come up with her $2.75. So Jen's, maybe even if you were transcribing it, you might go to 25 pages at the most for a traditional two-hour meeting. That was not a two-hour meeting that Jen had to take notes for. That was, what, three and a half? notes for. That was, what, three and a half hours? I think that Arthur's going to keep it to two hours.
He's going to keep it to one and a half.
Well, yeah. And so I do not think you're going to be looking at these prices based on what her per-page estimate is. I, I think Chris obtained a grant for the services for the OHM2, which offset the initial cost. And I do think because, because 10 years from now, people may be very concerned, and, and it would protect the township to have exactly what was said. And that's why I recommended Melissa look into this option. I, I think it's money well spent considering it's three meetings.
I concur.
Well, if the fiscal officer is saying, take the money.
If the fiscal officer is saying, spend the money.
If the fiscal officer is saying, do it, then.
I mean, I, that's just my opinion. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's a little, it's a little sticker shock for me, but, okay.
But that's based on 50 pages. You know, her $275 is based on 50 pages. She doesn't do 50. If she does 25, it's going to be a $137.50.
Approximately?
No.
It will be.
Approximately.
So.
Okay.
We're in agreement. All right. At this time, I'd like to hire Northeast Court Reporting LLC for the next three Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meetings for the court reporting services as outlined in this email. $70 an hour, $5.50 per page.
Second.
Thank you.
Asherel?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sweattick, sorry, Jen.
I'm sorry. We can go out of order.
Yes.
All right. And my last thing, I promise.
She's not doing like triple spacing, right?
How do you, do you want to do it?
No, I saw him.
Do you want to do it?
28.5.
It's worthwhile, I think.
Now you're sure you're new.
Very condensed.
All caps, Tony. Love all caps. I named him that. Jen Amberne has sent us some dates that she is available for us to run through the proctoring here at Hinkley Town Hall. And I wanted to see if you guys took a look at this to see if there are anything, is anything that fits your schedule, or do you want to wait till the work session to further discuss this?
I can do February 14.
Yeah. That was yesterday, sir.
I was going to say, when did she send us?
Yeah, she sent it on the 11th.
Oh, that's right. I talked to Jen about this. I can do.
I would do the 21st, but that, isn't it the holiday?
That is a holiday.
I could do the 28th.
I could do the 28th.
I can't do the 28th. I will be out of town.
That was
Rubbing it in.
I can do the 18th.
What is that? No.
Yeah, we, I could do the 18th.
Is that this Friday? I can't.
It is this Friday.
You can teach me.
And the 25th, are you, oh, I can't do the 25th. Well, and she said
She said that that's a soft date.
Yeah.
She told me she's flexible with that, and she's still going to be, you know,
Around.
SD anyways.
What if you zoomed her doing it?
What if we meet on the 28th with as many staff members as we can get, and then work on another one that trustee Asherel can attend?
Or you two figure one out, and I, you can teach me.
Let's talk about it the
I can do that.
That's what I said. Let's talk about it at the work session. All right. Take the dates with you. We'll discuss it the next work session. That's all I have. Martha, the floor is yours.
Thank God, folks. All I have is the fun stuff. $6,283,038.10, of which $1,64,126.80 in pooled investments, and $5,218,911.30 in primary checking. And for anybody who might want to handout from the finance informational meeting on Saturday, I have some extra here if anybody wants one.
Thank you for doing that meeting, Martha. That was very insightful.
It was fun.
She's, she wants to do it again.
Do it again on Saturday?
Let's do it again. It's fun. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills for $121,380.99.
Second.
Second in by Sweattick.
Asherel?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Do we have any public comments, questions?
We want to hear from you, but not really.
Of course we do.
Our Arden supporters, I can't believe you've lasted this long.
Arden Club? Yes, please. Just because of the microphone, and I've got
There's help screens on Zoom. There's tutorials on
Believe it or not, there's eight people on Mr. Larson.
Wow.
I'll put those eight people to sleep. Jim Larson, 20 Car Road, Hinkley.
Is it green?
It's red.
Oh, it's red. Oh, press the button. Jim Larson, 20 Car Road, Hinkley. A small issue came up today that I'd like you guys to consider over the next couple, three, four weeks. We were looking to get a recording of prior zoning commission meetings from Susan, and she sent back a list of how long you keep various records and so forth. And I would just ask that on audio and visual tape recordings of boarding commission meetings, you only keep them for a year. And there are some significant occasions, especially with the zoning commission, where the matters that they may be addressing, they transit two and three and four years. I would give you red as a clear example of that kind of stuff where there's various additions and things like that. And I've been to enough BZA zoning commission meeting and trustee meetings, and I read the minutes of a lot of those meetings. And you would scratch your head wondering if you went to the same meeting that the minutes were written at. Those meetings, those written minutes, they undergo a significant collegiality process to make them pleasant and wonderful and not necessarily indicative of the tone of the meeting. That's why listening to those tapes can be really insightful into really what was discussed, what would happen, as opposed to just reading what was decided and all the other stuff that they included in that, in those, in that meeting. I'm also interested in the zoning commission meetings, not so much the trustee meetings, because I know you don't record those. You don't record those anyway, but the zoning commission meetings and the BZA meetings, I believe, should be at least five years. Because what's the big deal with retaining those recordings of those meetings for five years versus one year?
Well, for, for those specific meetings, they were recorded on a little teeny tiny cassette player. So then we would have to spend funds to then transfer it to some type of new technology.
You've got, you've got any number of vehicles that people are recording some of those meetings right now. Because the meetings that are going on right now, I can, I can get for maybe back a year or so. But it's those meetings that occurred in 2017, 2018 that I would really be interested in listening to and can't because they weren't retained. I would just ask that going forward, you would consider retaining, retaining those recordings of those meetings for five years. I don't think that's really unreasonable. And I don't think it's a tremendous administrative burden, considering the technology that's available to, to
Not to keep them, but to do, to research them if you had a records request.
Yes.
Somebody would have to sit through.
We, we have asked and received zoning commission recordings, not, not videos, just the recordings, and it was not a big deal. It's, here's the link. Go to the link, listen to
Yeah, that's, but if you're asking like, oh, I want the one for this date, where you know that. But somebody could put in a request that says, any communications done at a zoning commission meeting regarding blah, 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 somebody's going to have to go back through and
It would, it would be just for the, the entire meeting, not any specific element
But that's
But you're going to have to go through the meeting to see if it was in there.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's
The meeting minutes. But you do understand that the last records request that you made took this office 15 hours, that we don't really have. We don't have 15 hours. So if you're, if you say, I want this topic, and you're now asking us to go through all the minutes to find the topic so we can find the recording, that is a tremendous amount of work.
So one thing, so one thing is, we are happy to provide whatever documents the public requests of us. And we follow the, the suggested retention period from the State of Ohio Historical Society. We, we do keep our recordings, we don't consider them transcription recordings, which they could be destroyed immediately after the minutes are prepared. We, we retain them for the, the longer period as noted there. That being said, if, if the trustees decided to keep them for a longer term, I don't think that's an issue at all. Really, Suzanne and I went through recordings, I think it was October perhaps, and we did have them destructed by our, they, you know, it was approved. We had everything approved. But they were on floppy disks. We had recordings from the 1980s and the 1990s and 2000 that we, you know, they were kept there on the shelf. And I'm like, these need to go. But to your point, we can determine that. We don't have to abide by that. To Jack's point of the storage, it depends on the medium they're stored in. And then the other thing that we're working with the administrative office is coming up with a map of where all of our documents are, is that because we've moved a lot of things around. I have a big room that was previously stored in the service garage. And last year, we moved everything over and got that done to secure these records. So we're going to do a map, like a card catalog of where to find things. And that may alleviate some of the concerns that Jack stated as defining these things. But no, our goal is, is to provide
I would never ask you or anybody else pouring through floppy disks or anything like that. My frame of reference is the technology that you have today, and I'm only asking you to consider it.
Oh, yeah, there's a reasonable period, you know, and there's a reasonable period to destruct within, and there's a reasonable period to retain.
And now that we've opened up
I hear what you're saying, but that, that, that's you as an individual. You're not the only one out there. You know what I'm saying? Yeah.
Exactly.
And now that we've opened up the Zoom, we just got an email saying that all of our recordings for our meetings, we are outside of our Zoom storage. So now we have to figure
People do a great job, you know.
But now we have to find another way to store it. So what are the costs with that? You know, so, you know, there are so many different things that we look at, and we do our due diligence to really try. But I think the, I completely agree with you that once somebody comes in with a broad records request, we will be digging to find the records because we want to do the best job we can to provide the most accurate records.
All I really am interested in is the recordings of the BZA zoning commission meetings and issues. And because they're recorded for the trustees, they're really kind of available.
I don't think we ever gave those recordings. Have, have we given those recordings out before we did the Zoom?
See, the, the best thing that
If they were requested.
The best thing that could happen would be an outside entity, a public
Oh, absolutely. And we have to.
Citizen, making the recordings and have a repository. They're not subject
They're on the computer. They're digitized.
You know?
Right.
Yeah.
From back to when?
The, the
I'm not talking about the Zoom ones. I'm saying before Zoom.
No.
So what, how are they digitized?
Right.
They're digitized on thumb drives.
The, the other thing also, I feel that was discussed.
Recorder.
Got it.
Yeah.
Maybe a month or two ago was when we redo the website, you know, if we're going to move forward with recording meetings, either audio or visual, having a link on the website for those things, and following our records retention schedule of two years, something like that. So that's something that I think we're probably going to discuss in work session when we're talking about the scope of work for the website, is what, what do we want to incorporate on there and what's going to be on there? And maybe that's something, and I don't know off the top of my head, what our records retention is. If Suzanne said a year on, on that, then I'm sure Suzanne's accurate with that.
It's really well documented what you're retaining for how long. So, and as I say, I'm going to ask you to consider it. And obviously, I'm only looking at it from my perspective, not the global perspective of all the things that could be asked. So, and one last thing, you talked about the liaison between BZA and zoning commission. I think that's a good idea. What I would really like to see, if that goes forward, is that those positions, or those meetings are attended by rotation, not, in other words
Not the same liaison every time.
I hate to say the word cherry picked, but I would like to see whoever attends those meetings from BZA or ZC, zoning commission, that be a rotating person as opposed to a single individual all the time. Because, yeah, they are experts, but each of those experts has their own points of view and the way they view things. And I'd like to see everybody get a chance to sit on each side of the fence and see what they can do to make the process better. But I mean, I think it's a good idea because I was thinking when you were talking through all the applicants for the zoning commission and the BZA, how different those two boards really are. Because the BZA can be stultifyingly boring 80% of the time. Really, they can. But that other 20%, that's the hottest ticket and the hottest seat in town. So I was thinking, you know, when you think about staffing those, are those people going to be able to handle the kinds of pressure that they're going to feel and get from lawyers and citizens and everything else when, you know, the next senior housing issue comes up, or the next tire max or something like that? Because that can really be intense on that BZA. Whereas the zoning commission is kind of a lot more collaborative process where they're talking about rules and regulations and whether or not various projects conform to those rules and regulations. It's, you know, it's, it's less what it can be most of the time, less, you know, less dried. It's more, they're thinking through all the things that they have to do. But those two boards are really, really different. And I just hope that people who put on BZA are ready, will be able to take the pressure when the next project that's high visibility comes down. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good point. It's a good point, Jen.
I'm pretty confident that those folks that we've brought in today are going to be up for that challenge.
Most people who don't go, you never know how different those two
And they should be different.
Really are. They are. They're different.
And they should be autonomous. And I just had a conversation with a resident who said, Melissa, you should be directing them on what to do. And I said, I will not be directing them on what to do. They are autonomous boards. They make their own decisions. Anybody else? All right. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting at, or adjourn the meeting at 9:03 PM.
Second.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.